I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You want to go ahead and call the roll, please?
Commissioner Nesbit?
Here.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Here.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Present.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Present.
Commissioner Torres?
Here.
Commissioner Young?
Present.
And Chairman Wiley?
Here. Thank you. Well, good evening. On behalf of the City of Independence, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for the evening of October the 29th, 2024. For those who wish to speak tonight, please remember to address all comments and questions to the chair. Keep your comments brief and on point. If you agree with a previous comment, simply indicate your agreement and move on. To expedite tonight's meeting, I will ask anyone who thinks or would like to testify to go ahead and stand, please. Anyone that would want to comment tonight? All right, seeing none, I will call the first case. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Second.
You want to call the roll?
Sure. Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
And Chairman Wiley?
Yes. I do have case to be continued. Do I have a motion?
Chair.
Commissioner Nesbit?
I make a motion to continue case 24-100-24 rezoning 2131 South Scott Avenue to November 19th meeting.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, let's call the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chairman Wiley?
Yes. We have a second case to continue. Do I have a motion?
Chair.
Commissioner Nesbit?
I make a motion that we continue case 24-125-05 rezoning PUD 19300 East 37th Terrace to, it doesn't say, is it November 19?
Yes.
Okay, November 19.
I second.
Any questions, concerns? All right, let's call the vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
And Chairman Wiley?
Yes. All right, the first public hearing for tonight is a continued case on the agenda. Case number 241017 rezoning. Do I have a staff report?
Yes. So this is an application for a rezoning that was submitted by the City of Independence. So it's a staff-initiated rezoning. From the street view of the area, you can see that it's bound by Maywood on the west, Ash Avenue, and Hardy. This is along the 18th Street corridor, excuse me. The zoning map here shows the C2 zoning district surrounded by R12. To the north, there's an apartment complex. The comprehensive plan designates this area to be residential neighborhoods. And here's the notification area map. So all of the property owners within the existing C2 zoning district were notified of this staff-initiated rezoning, and all of the property owners within 185-foot radius of the C2 zoning district were also notified. An aerial photograph of the C2 zoning district showing the Kansas City Southern Railway bisecting the district. The properties included in this application for rezoning were platted as part of two separate subdivisions. The continuation of Maywood, platted in 1887, that encompasses the lots north of 18th Street, and South Maywood, platted in 1922, that encompasses the lots south. Lots 12 and 13 of continuation of Maywood were replatted in 1904 as part of Wynn's Maywood Resurvey. This area would be annexed by Independence in 1948. Prior to the annexation of these two subdivisions, much of this area would have already been developed with single-family houses. At the time, Independence adopted its zoning district map in 1965. The properties part of this application that lie to the south of 18th Street were designated C2, and the properties north of 18th Street were designated C3. In 1980, when Independence updated its zoning district map, these properties were uniformly designated C2. The city adopted its unified development ordinance in 2009, and these properties all retained a C2 zoning classification. Since the city's adoption of its zoning ordinance, these properties have remained in a commercial zoning district. The city seeks to rezone these properties, part of this application, to R6 and R12 to better conform with the existing land use and character of the surrounding neighborhood. Residences in this existing commercial zoning district vary in age from 1910 to 1960, the existing single-family houses having been built by 1930. The single-family homes in this district are of similar size, age, and design. There are two duplexes east of the Kansas City Southern Railway that Jackson County property records indicate were constructed in 1961. There is one commercial property in this zoning district located at 10211 East 18th Street. It's Lot 98 of the South Maywood subdivision. Real estate records indicate the structure was built in 1935. This property is not a part of this application for a rezoning, as the structure is commercial in character and design. This commercial zoning district runs along 18th Street, about two blocks, bound generally by Maywood Avenue on the west and Hardy Avenue to the east. It is bisected by the Kansas City Southern Railway. The surrounding homes in this area are of similar size, age, and design. This proposal conforms with Independence for All strategic plan's objective: stabilize and revitalize neighborhoods. Rezoning these properties will ensure they remain residential in use. Imagine Independence Comprehensive Plan 2040 envisions the area west of the Kansas City Southern Railway to be designated for residential established neighborhoods, while east of the railway is designated for residential urban neighborhoods. Construction of this neighborhood predominantly took place in the first half of the 20th century. Rezoning these properties retains the historic character of the neighborhood by aligning their land use with their current use. This rezoning supports the preservation and protection of this historic area. Maintaining a commercial zoning classification for the property located at 10211 East 18th Street maintains the unique and vibrant character of this area and promotes growth of small entrepreneurs. These properties are not located with any sub-area plan. The R6 zoning classification allows single-family detached structures, while R12 allows for two-family attached structures. There are no apparent historical or archaeological issues with this property. All utilities are already in place. A first-order stream runs west along this section of 18th Street and follows Maywood Avenue to the south. This stream is part of the Rock Creek watershed. Winter Road Complete Streets is planned to begin in fiscal year 2024 to 2025 and end 2025 to 2026. This project will improve both vehicular and non-motorized mobility for system users by connecting existing sidewalks, placing crosswalks and new pedestrian signals, and adding bike lanes to Winter Road from 24 Highway to Hedges Avenue. Here are some pictures of the C2 zoning district facing west, down 18th Street. Here's one of the duplexes, South Maywood Lot 34. The second duplex, facing southwest, looking at the driveway there and down the street. Here's another angle, looking east, under the railroad overbridge, looking up 18th Street. Facing north, under the railroad overbridge at the intersection of 18th and Ash. Facing west, looking under the overbridge there. Facing southeast, a different angle, past the bridge, looking south at Maywood Lot 97. Facing south, South Maywood Lot 98, here's a commercial property that will remain in a commercial zoning district. Lot 99 of South Maywood, this will be a residential property. Lot 100 of South Maywood. Facing west at the intersection of Maywood and 18th Street. Now we're looking north at a vacant lot. This is Wynn's Maywood Resurvey Lot 14. Another house here, Wynn's Maywood Resurvey Lot 13. This is another house on the same lot, Lot 13. So there's two houses on the Lot 13. Looking south across the street at South Maywood Lot 154. And here's down Maywood, so you can see either houses on both sides of the road will be included in this application for rezoning from C2 to R6. And then down the street and take a left on Ash Avenue. So it might be a little confusing here. So this is the south of the railroad, looking north at a dead-end street, Ash Avenue. And there's two properties on either side of Ash, one on the east, says parts of lots 32 and 33 of the South Maywood subdivision. Facing west, Lot 97 of South Maywood subdivision. And that concludes the presentation.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the staff?
Chair.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Staff, you say we're including 10205? Is that correct? So the printing company's 10122?
I believe you are right.
Okay, then, so it's not infringing on them at all or anything?
10205 is included in the application for rezoning. That property will be rezoned from C2 to R6.
Okay.
That's Lot 99, and then Lot 98, what used to be Maywood Printing Company, changed ownerships.
And it's staying residential?
That is staying commercial.
Staying commercial, okay. Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? All right, hearing done.
Commissioner Nesbit? I am so sorry.
Yes, Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve case 24117 for rezoning on 18th Street.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second? From Commissioner Torres?
I have a question.
Man, Chair.
Yes.
Do we need to open this up or are there nobody here?
Since it was city instructed.
I mean, there's nobody here to talk for it?
No, there's not.
Okay.
Mitch, do I still need to call it, though, sir? Okay.
Mainly because you did send out letters, so nothing was identified, so I just think you know, if you're like, just going to be here to talk about it, it'd be clear.
Okay. Well, then I will do that. Is there anyone present who would like to speak for this case? Seeing none, anyone who would like to speak against this case? All right, the hearing is closed.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner O'Neal?
I move for approval of my previous motion.
And do I have a second? Yes, with Commissioner Torres? And now, Gabe, we're ready for a vote.
All righty. Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chairman Wiley?
Yes, and the motion passes seven to zero. We will now move on to our next hearing case. Case number, excuse me, 24100-25 rezoning of Chrisler Avenue.
Yes, rezoning of the Chrisler Stadium location. Two lots, one that contains the Chrisler Stadium and one that's to the southeast of that. Currently, the properties are zoned I1 and R6, and it would be entirely rezoned to R6. Okay, this is the zoning here, map here, so you can see the portion that is I1. Most of it's R6. Given the use, given it's public use, the actual zoning isn't important, but what is important is we need to create one zoning district on one lot, and that's the reason why we're rezoning this all to a single zoning. Okay? So the comprehensive plan, of course, envisions this for park use here, as you can see. This is being done in conjunction with a real estate sale, and this is the minor subdivision that is the subject of that sale, which is being reviewed administratively at this time. And this is an aerial photograph of the area, so got Chrisler there on the left and 23rd Street going across the top. And so it's highly developed there in that northern portion where you have the sports activities in the parking lot, and you have that undeveloped property there that you see to the southeast. So the Independence School District is entering into agreement with the City of Independence for Chrisler Stadium and for that adjoining parcel to the southeast. Prior to 2009, the I1 industrial portion of the property was zone M1 industrial, and the R6 single-family portion was designated as R1B single-family residential. The R1B single-family residential portion of the property was zoned to R1 single-family residential before 1980. So the property has been M1 industrial or R1 single-family from 1965 until about 1980. So this is a request by the city to rezone property from R6 and R1 to R6. Of course, although the property has a public use and the use is permitted in both I1 and R6 zonings, the UDO requires that there only be one zoning per lot, and therefore the property, when replatted, has to be rezoned. So, physical characteristics of the property are that the property is already developed and is the site of a baseball stadium, grandstands, a concession area, paved parking lot, beach volleyball area, and undeveloped field to the southeast on the adjacent lot will be joined with the main property to create this single one-lot subdivision. The south, southeast, and east sides of the property have a perimeter of trees. The northwest corner of the property, where that parking lot sits, is entirely covered with pavement. The property sits southeast of the busy intersection there at 23rd and Chrisler. The 23rd Street corridor is dominated by commercial uses. Southwest of the property is where the Army National Guard armory is, and then south and to the southeast of the property are single-family and then multifamily across the tracks. However, the railroad rideaway abuts immediately to the east, separating that multifamily and a church that's also up on 23rd Street from this property. The sale will improve public infrastructure and facilities. Supporting existing expanded uses of community facilities is one of the policies of the comprehensive plan. Sub-area plans, well, this area is not covered by a sub-area plan. Zoning, although the property has public uses that are permitted in both the I1 and R6, the uses listed for those zonings are I1 basically allows warehousing, wholesaling, and then industry-type things like vehicle repair, small engine repair, and then vehicle storage, and of course, government facility uses, utilities, and of course, manufacturing. As far as allowed uses in the R6 district, of course, that's our single-family home district allows, you know, home businesses, home-based daycare, government uses, churches, schools, utilities, cemeteries, and different agricultural activities. Plating, the property consists of, right now, two unplatted tracks. Of course, the developed tract on the north is a 5.9-acre tract abutting the intersection. It contains the large impervious parking lot, and of course, the stadium and the volleyball area. The undeveloped portion to the southeast is roughly three acres. These will be platted into a one-lot subdivision as part of the property's transference from the City of Independence to the Independence School District. There are no apparent historic or archaeological issues with this property. Of course, all utilities are available in nearby rights-of-way and easements. There is a stream in the tunnel under the parking lot. Therefore, the minor subdivision indicates that a 170-foot-wide stream buffer is created. Further, a small portion of the very northwest part of the property is a Zone A FEMA flow plan designated area by the intersection. As far as CPI investments, the city does not have any capital improvements projects planned in this area at this time. Sidewalks and access, there is an existing sidewalk along 23rd Street, but there's no driveways that give direct access to that. The west side has a contiguous paved surface that sort of just spills into Chrisler Avenue, and there's a visible area that is a sidewalk that is within that paved surface. The northwest side of the property has little green space except for what's abutting in the 23rd Street rideaway and adjacent to the volleyball courts. The stadium has some small green lawn areas around it and trees around the perimeter. The southeast track is basically this undeveloped green meadow that's surrounded by trees on the perimeter. So we'll begin by here on the east side of Chrisler, right by the volleyball court, looking east into the property, actually more southeast. And then this is looking north from the south side of the baseball field in the stadium. 23rd Street would be to the north there. So this is looking southwest across the parking lot toward Chrisler and toward the cemetery monument sales business there that's off in the distance. This is facing west down 23rd Street toward the intersection with Chrisler. This is facing to the east. You can see a little bit of the stadium next to the little zoning sign that's out there. And then this is way at the rear, facing south, looking at this wooded area, and it's sort of a ravine that's behind there where that tunnel exits and that creek emerges there in the southeast. And then this is that big meadow. It actually has this large, broken paved area that's actually still there, more meadow toward the back framed with trees around the sides there. And then this is looking east right toward the railway rideaway, the bed up high there above the surrounding area. So our recommendation is, staff recommends approval of this rezoning request, and I'll take any questions you may have.
Right, any questions for the staff?
Chair.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Okay, so what year was the stadium built?
Seventy-two? Sixty?
I'm unsure of that.
Okay, my question is, what considers something to be historic would think over 50 years would be historic? Is that not correct?
That could be true. I'm unsure.
Well, I'm thinking, this is a historic site for Independence, is what I'm saying. I'm trying to figure out if we're planning on selling it so that they tear it down and remodels, if that's what the plans are? Are they going to keep it?
So, I think, two things there. So if there's, if it is a historical site, there would have to be an application submitted to our historical preservation. That being said, from what I understand it, is that they actually wanted to use the stadium. I don't have that for sure, but that's kind of my understanding is the reason for them being interested in the purchase.
That the school district wants to use it?
Yes.
I thought they already used it. I thought they used to play like Truman and Crispin High School games there.
That is the only information I have, so. We don't have anything more detailed as for their intention.
Not forward if they're going to sell it, tear it down. I mean, that's what I'm saying. That's why I'd like to have a little bit more information if that's correct.
Yeah, I don't have any information that they're intending to sell it.
Okay, but they plan on putting houses on the backside? Is that correct the way I understand it?
I mean, I understand that part of that southern section, a lot of that's in stream buffers, so it's not really conducive to be able to do that. One of the reasons for the consistent zoning, any kind of like government or school districts can operate in any zoning districts, so it's not, they don't have to have a specific zoning district to do activities that they wish to do.
Okay. I'm still at a loss what, I mean, because he said something about plating it for a subdivision. I'm going, are we going to tear it down or?
Well, it's being, the consideration is to have it zoned to R6, which is the lowest, one of the lowest zoning districts with the least amount of impact.
Right. I can understand that. I mean, as R6, still, school district can run R6 and all that stuff, so. I just want, that's where I'm at. I just want to make sure we're not just trying to give it to the, the way I talk, the way I'm thinking, if you give it to the school district, then the school district will sell it to somebody and tear it down. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
I mean, ultimately, if the sale goes through, I mean, we can't predict what may happen in the future, but that's not what my understanding is of it.
Okay.
Rick, was this property for sale, or did the school district approach the city?
I don't have the specifics on that.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner?
Did the city parks contact you and weigh in on anything? Don't they, don't they take care of that and run it?
They do. It wasn't the Parks Department, though, that came before us from this. This one came from city management.
Is, how imminent is this sale? Um, is, how imminent is this sale?
I don't have specifics as to like the, where, where it's at right now in process.
It troubles me a little bit that you, it's not your fault, but it troubles me a little bit that you don't know. You know, I mean, why, is there a big secret going on, or?
I'm not aware of any secret for it. I, I think the intent is just to make sure it's zoned consistently.
Sure. Well, Commissioner Nesbit's point is, is well-taken. Can we postpone this a little bit so we can get some information about what's happening? Uh, is this something that is just, if we change the zoning, then it stops with us, or does it go to city council?
So, it goes to city council. This is a recommending body, so any, anything that this commission recommends goes to council for final approval.
Well, it's, it's always difficult to, I'm not saying you guys are fortunate, but it's always difficult. We're always put in this situation where it's hard for us to make a decision when we can't get any of our questions answered. So, uh, I'm kind of in favor of making a motion to postpone to the next meeting until we can get some more reliable information from the parks, uh, from the school district, or from somebody that knows something a little more about this.
Let me ask a clarifying question. So, if we do not rezone, vote to rezone today, then the sale could not commence, and it would wait upon our postponement?
I mean, it would delay it because the reason why we're having the rezoning is not for u- use-related reasons.
But for sale.
Like you said, but because it has to do with our code requiring one zoning per lot, and we're creating a brand-new lot out of these two tracks, and therefore, it has to have one single zoning, and that's the only reason why we're here.
So, Rick, if we postpone, could this be on the next agenda?
Yes, I mean, you can postpone it to the next agenda.
And we could propose those questions and have answers the next time? I will entertain a motion.
I thought I made a motion, but.
Second.
It's been first and second. Let's go ahead and call a vote.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Wait a minute.
We are voting to postpone.
To, to the next.
We're voting postpone to the next meet, to our next meeting.
To November 19th meeting.
November 19th, okay.
And the reason we're doing this is because we want more information, and anybody can add on here from the school district, what their intentions are, from manager's office, I guess, if he wants to weigh in, city parks department, you know, who else? Anybody else?
No, that sounds good.
Historic.
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 Yeah, historic.
Just, you know, what, it just seems like the right thing to do, Rick. So, I, I realize it may not change the sale or anything, but weren't, isn't, you said it was the lowest zoning they could do. But with that zoning, they can do whatever they want to do if they want to come back and change it. If they wanted to tear the whole thing down and start it back over again, whatever they want to do there, they could do that, correct?
Yeah, I mean, they would have to come forward with an application for any other type of zoning request.
'Cause they're a little different, right? I mean, they, was it my understanding they can operate under just about any zoning?
That is correct.
Yeah, yeah, pretty much.
Okay, well, so, I hope, I hope that motion is okay with you.
Up to the purview of the commission.
Okay.
All right, let's go ahead, call the vote.
Okay. Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
No.
Commissioner Torres?
No.
Um, Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Okay, and Commissioner, our, I'm sorry, Chairman Wiley?
Yes. So, that motion has been postponed five to two. Rick, how would you like us to propose our questions that we need answered?
I think we've got those.
Okay, thank you. All right, our next case, 24175-08, UDO Amendment Number 71, trash haulers. Could we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you. This is case 2417508, UDO Amendment Number 71, trash haulers. So, in, in our particular code right now, the only, um, the only section that references anything to do with refuge collections or trash haulers, what we traditionally see is, um, you know, a company going through neighborhood streets to pick up trash, um, is in Chapter 19 of the code. It's part of our transportation, um, code section. It's not something that we typically, you know, see here in the UDO. One of the questions that was posed to us by council was to see if there's a way to make sure we can incorporate that in the UDO as part of the zoning. So, when the zoning code was adopted in 2009, um, it did not contain anything related to trash haulers or refuge collectors. As I mentioned, that was only in Chapter 19. In that particular chapter, it talks about having a certificate of public convenience, which goes before the council, uh, doesn't come before this body. It actually just goes straight to council. Council makes a determination of whether or not that is a type of business that would be allowed. There's some criteria in Chapter 19 that, uh, an applicant would have to meet. That's what the council considers. What council had asked staff to do is like, as I mentioned, uh, put a ordinance together to make sure that it's part of the actual UDO, so it goes before Planning Commission, the public hearing process, and then off to council for a final decision. And so, what we have done, we put, we put together a code amendment that includes a few sections. We've basically added it, um, into the UDO, Chapter 14. Part of that includes Section 14-2006. We basically created a definition, which actually comes from Chapter 19, of refuge collectors. And so, that is part of the amendment that we have is the definitions. And then, in Chapter four, in Section 14-302, we included this as one of the use groups under the I-1 and I-2 districts, uh, included that in the chart that requests this to go through as a special use permit. And so, it follows a special use permit process, which again, becomes a public hearing, comes before Planning Commission, uh, gets public notice to the public, and then it goes before council. Um, we added a new section, since we did not have refuge collections in Chapter 14. We created a new section, 14-428. This one actually talks about all the procedures that an applicant would have to follow, plus it has specifications as to what the special use permit would have to include before it comes before this body. With that, um, I don't really have a whole lot else to add to it, and I'm open to any questions you may have.
All right, commissioners, anything for the staff?
Chair.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Okay, Rick, so, we've gone through, I'm, the, sorry, I did not get to read this all, but, uh, we've gone through here and everything's up to snuff for, is this gonna make everyone that's a trash hauler now have to come in and get a special permit, or the other ones gonna be grandfathered in?
So, not existing ones. This would be for any new particular trash hauler. There were several changes made. There was a cap placed on the number of trash haulers. However, an applicant still can come forward. They would still have to go through that Chapter 19, um, the, um, certificate of need, and then they would then include that as part of their application. They would have to come before Planning Commission and council for the special use permit.
So, you're saying we can't have perp ones that are doing it now come in and apply for a permit?
That's not what this, it's not intended to require new applicants to do that, or existing applicants to do that.
Okay, so, but, I'm guessing the current ones apply, have all this applied to them, so they should be okay anyway? Is that correct?
Yeah, their, their licenses are in good standing. Um, I mean, there's a possibility if they didn't have their license and then they would fall into having to follow this process again if they were to lose that, but, um, not for the, um, existing licensed trash haulers.
Okay, thanks.
Question?
Commissioner Ashbaugh, go ahead.
Just, uh, the existing trash haulers, um, what would cause them to have to apply with that application? Is there any, like, if they buy a property, or they do anything, or it's just grandfathered in forever, no matter, you know, if they start storing nuclear waste? I mean, I mean, what, is there anything that?
So, really, it would end up basically being if they lost their business license or if they chose not to renew their business license.
That's basically it.
Yep.
And that's in here?
It's not in this particular section. There are other sections of the code that talk about businesses under the Business License Code that if you were to lose your, um, or if you did not renew your business license within six months, then technically, it's no longer valid. But it's not in this section.
And so, if they do try to renew, then they're, they're treated as if they're new applicants?
That would be the case, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Can you remind me how many trash haulers we have and how many we're allowed?
I believe we have eight. I believe it's eight. We'd have to pull up the report, but I believe there's eight.
I'm just wondering, so a new applicant wants to come in, but we're at our maximum?
Correct.
What does that conversation look like?
Well, again, they could apply. I mean, it would be like any other, you know, density limitation business that were to come in and, and want to apply for something, and we've already hit our max. We would just have to inform them that we're, we're at the max. But again, if one left and then they wanted to come back, they would have to follow this process.
Any other questions for the staff?
Chair, one more question here.
Yes, Commissioner.
So, Rick, you say we're at eight haulers right now. Does that include dumpsters that are dropped and hauled away, or is that not included?
That does not include that. That is separate.
Is there a way?
We have three of those types of businesses in the city, and those are, it's a different classification because it's not, it doesn't fall under the same state classification as a refuge collection-type business. These are businesses that basically rent out dumpsters.
Right.
And, and that just falls under a different category of type of business. And in this particular code, we actually excluded that business.
Okay, well, one question while I'm trying, just thinking off the top of my head here. Do we get a tax on if they rent dumpsters in our city or not?
Ooh, I'm not aware of that. I, I.
I mean, I'm guessing.
I can't answer that question right now.
'Cause I'm guessing we get tax, we get tax money from all the haulers that haul trash around. That's why I wonder, is that something we need to look into so we can, I mean, it's, it's gonna be hard to do, I think, but, I mean.
I would have to research that. I, I don't have an answer to that right now.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any other questions regarding trash haulers and the UDO amendment? All right, hearing none. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak for this case? Anyone in the room who would like to speak against this case? Hearing none. I'm gonna close the hearing. Hearing's closed, all. Take the vote.
Commissioner.
We have to make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make it.
Thank you.
I'll, second.
We have.
24175-08, UDO Amendment Number 71, trash haulers.
All right, thank you. And second. All right, now we'll take a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
And Chairman Wiley?
Yes. And, um, UDO amendment passes seven to zero. All right. Our training has been moved to November 19th, and so, I suspect that will be a long meeting, so bring your snacks and your thermal underwear. Is there anything for the good of the group tonight? Anyone? Commissioner Young, anything? Commissioner Torres? Commissioner O'Neil? Commissioner Ashbaugh?
No.
All right, Commissioner Ferguson?
Only, why thermal underwear? Are we gonna do it outside?
Well, November 19th, it's gonna get cold. I'm underneath the air conditioner in October, it's freezing.
Oh, okay.
All right, Commissioner Nesbit?
I just wanted to clarify.
Anything, Commissioner? All right, staff, anything else we need to know?
Um, we did have a question last time about a final plat, and I don't know if you wanted me to go ahead and kind of give you a brief answer.
That would be great.
So, I kind of went through the code and tried to summarize what it basically is, and so, I've got this thing, I'm just gonna read it. Basically, the final plat is a legal document that is recorded with the county recorder's office that delineates the property boundaries, delineates and describes any of the easements, rights-of-ways, or tracts of land. Approval of the final plat ensures that all conditions of the preliminary plat have been satisfied and can only be submitted after the engineering plan documents and specifications have been submitted and approved, meeting all city codes. The question basically came at, what is the difference between the two, preliminary and final? Essentially, your preliminary is essentially the approval of the project. At that point, that's when you're gonna see a developer expend funds to hire engineers, do the design, potentially get bids and contractors onboard, get material costs and everything situated. So, they can spend, you know, tens of thousands of dollars just to get to that point, and then, of course, when they get to the end, assuming it has met the, that design has met the, substantially conforms to that preliminary plat, then they will record the final plat, and that's essentially the legal document that sets the lots and all the easements and, and describes all that on the document, and that, that gets recorded with the county. And so, that's essentially that process. It does still come before this Planning Commission as well as council. Typically, it will come before this commission as consented agenda item, um, and then goes the same with council, with two reads.
Any additional questions?
Yeah, could you speak louder in the area? Would you repeat?
Oh, sorry.
No.
Okay.
Rick, we did have one question that came up, uh, that I did forget about, and that was, what is the inclement weather, um, policy in regards to Planning Commission meetings?
I would have to look at that.
Would you?
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
With seeing nothing else, we are adjourned at 6:47.